...here to talk about, if you can't tell, 5th grade science. And they're pretty excited to share a whole bunch of different things. So Alejandro, it looks like you're starting, okay?
Welcome to 5th grade science. Today we will be talking about our district research nature center and how we built hot air balloons. We split the day in half like this because we didn't have enough room in the planetarium. We did all this because we are studying space for science. Now welcome Nick Zerbell to the stage. Um, so two classes went to the retro nature center and two were building hot air balloons. Um, and I hope that anyone discovers it. So this is a picture of the first, the first two classes that went to retro nature center. And um, so retro nature center first confessions. Um, when we were walking up to the doors, there was a nature trail. I thought it was honestly amazing. There was a bunch of flowers, animals just roaming around. And it was actually pretty cool. When we walked in, you could see the doors to the planetarium and you could see another place that we went on to talk about later. Hello, my name is Alejandro Stasiyev and I will be talking about the retro planetarium show. So after we toured the lobby bed, we went inside the dome and it was the biggest dome I had ever seen. The lights dimmed and the show began. The show, as you can see here, it was called the nine planets encountering. And it talked about how there could be more than nine planets in the solar system, how astronomy has changed over the years, and about the planets. After the show, which I thought was amazing, we toured the lobby a bit more and then we went on the hike.
Hello everyone, I'm Brooke Howard and I'm going to be talking about the nature hike. The nature hike was beautiful and luckily it was the only day that it didn't rain. It was so much fun and everyone enjoyed it. The weather was about thirty to forty-five degrees. There were so many plants and animals and we all wish we could hike there again. The hot air balloons. Getting ready for hot air balloons. My name is Taylor Powell. And I'm in the meeting. And we were making our balloons with a range of three or four. We took eighteen pieces of tissue paper and we glued three together so we had six long pieces. After we made the six long pieces, we were ready to make the full balloon. To make the full balloon, we glued the six pieces into a circular shape. The balloon was almost ready. We added the bottom one and it was ready to launch. The launch fire from Lecha Payne and Brianna Reed. For launching, we went up to the concession scene and then we all waited to put our first hot air balloon on the launcher and fly it. This is the first hot air balloon that we've been working on. I hope you enjoy it.
Let's go countdown you guys. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Our first hot air balloon was a success as you saw in the video. We had people who would catch the balloons, you might have seen that in the video, when they were coming down to the ground. The part I enjoyed the most was probably just working together, making the hot air balloons and basically just catching the balloons and just having fun saying love in the air. Also last question.
Thank you for having us. Any questions or anything?
I had a question. What was the most exciting part about the hot air balloon day?
Does it mention?
Brianna? Brianna? What was the most exciting part?
Catching them off.
Does anyone else have a different answer?
Catching them.
Catching them?
To me, it was just like making them and working all together to like make it and accept everything to like launch it.
Mr. Zerbell?
Um, catching them, but hopefully not ripping them.
Were all four of you in the same, or I guess all seven of you in the same like section or you were?
No. No. No, we're in different groups.
Because it was, I think it was Jones and Hannah and Hannah and Stope and Friday and one two different, so.
Any other questions?
I have a question. What was the most challenging part about making hot air balloons? Alicia?
Um, I'd say that the most challenging was that when we had to like trace and make everything like perfect because if we didn't, and if it didn't, if it rips, then it might have not gone up like if you, when you glued it, it could have ripped or anything could have ripped, so.
Nick?
Um, I would consider the most challenging part is teamwork because you were all working on different sections mainly. And so you have to work together to try to glue them together.
Leila?
I would say making the measurements because that's really, you have to use an access to dig, so that was really hard.
Did you guys use specific tools for measurement or how did that look?
Yes.
Yard ruler, yeah.
Alexandra, what would you like to say?
Um, I'd say like building the balloon because you had to like get everything exact or else it wasn't not going to fly. Yeah.
Brooke?
I'd say gluing it together because if you glue it together like good enough, then your seams would like rip and it wouldn't be able to fly.
I would say the gluing because if you like plastered it too hard and you went too quick gluing it, then it would rip and then you don't want it ripped because otherwise it will fly as good or it will slide, so that's a good part.
Any balloons catch on fire?
Yes.
Mr. Puss. Who is the fire marshal on site?
One got a little overheated. You're away from the school.
How did you make the, how did you make the hot air go up? I mean, what, what did you do to make the hot air? I don't understand.
Well, um, so. So it's like, it's basically when a hot, hot air rises and cold air comes down.
Was it a cow?
So this had a fan in it that would make the air hotter and then. And then one. Um, so basically that had a fan in it that would make the air turn hot. And then when it went hot, because it was so cold outside, it would make the hot air balloon raise up because the hot air would go up with the hot air balloon while the hot air was still in it. And then eventually the hot air turned into cold air again and then it came down.
Any other questions?
Comments?
Well done you guys.
Well done.
Got something for each of you.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Hi, I'm Mrs.
Do they have rockets here at the middle school?
Uh, does Dave Winger do rockets anymore? We used to.
We do, he does two liter bottle rockets, so.
Okay, this meeting has been voted on the normal voting process. We have the agenda to approve next.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second, any discussions? All in favor then say aye. Vote same sign. We've got the minutes from October twenty-eighth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, at seventeen AM, open session.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections to those minutes? And all in favor say aye. Aye. Vote the same sign. Motion's carried. We've got the financial report and bill listing.
Right, uh, let's see here. Voucher listing for October twenty-third through November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, from general fund payroll, checks numbers five-five-three-seven-five-nine through five-five-three-seven-sixty for two hundred and three dollars and sixty-three cents. And direct deposit numbers nine-zero-zero-zero-five-zero-four-eight-four through nine-zero-zero-zero-five-zero-five-nine-two for one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Next wire transfers for payroll liabilities, wires numbers two-zero-one-nine-zero-zero-one-zero-three through two-zero-one-nine-zero-zero-one-one-seven. For two hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixteen cents for a total payroll of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, ninety-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Uh, next accounts payable, checks numbers five-three-nine-four-six through five-three-ninety-five for forty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Next wire, AP wire transfer, two-zero-one-nine-zero-zero-one-zero-six for one hundred and eleven dollars and fifteen cents. Next credit card transaction number one-zero-two-one-one-nine for twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Next ACH, direct deposit numbers one-nine-two-zero-zeros, I'm sorry.
Two with zeros.
There's four zeros, well, my vision's going, finally, alright. Numbers one-nine-two-zero-zero-zero-eight-five through one-nine-two-zero-zero-zero-nine-eight for three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents for our account, total accounts payable of seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Then just total disbursements of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirteen cents.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the voucher list. Any questions? And all in favor say aye. Aye. Vote the same sign. Motion's carried. We are on two delegations to be heard. And we've had three that would like to speak. Heidi Jones is on there.
She left. I think she just signed in. Yeah, she just signed in.
Oh, there's a place for them to check, that's right.
Yeah, she left.
Okay.
What's her first name? Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
Soffa? Yep. Janine?
Yes, Janine.
Janine. She left too. She left today.
AJ?
Um, I just put on, I don't know if this is like the purpose of this, but I just wanted to like extend like a formal invitation to all five of you. Like if you ever wanted to come in and like observe and see like at least what my classroom looks like. I just know that you guys do a lot for our school and I'm really grateful for it. So if you ever wanted to see like the work you're supporting in action, like I just wanted to take time to formally invite you guys in to come and see what my classroom looks like and just to see what's going on. Any subject, anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zero males. Okay, we are on to district administrators report, we've got donations.
Yep, we do have an anonymous donor who has purchased a primary school bench out in the primary school playground area, I do believe. I would like to remain anonymous, but on behalf of Mr. Buddhist and their quote was, made the bench provide comfort for as many years as Mike did, so. Very, very nice donation there, so. Just looking for a motion to approve the donation as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the donation as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Motion's carried, we have no personal actions, information.
And then this earlier last week, Monday last week, they, uh, state did supply the state report cards out and I did share this with our staff and our families, but obviously we did, we did very, very well. Again, big thank you to our staff as well as our students and our families for putting great effort in forward to making sure that our school district report card is, is up to par. So we are significantly exceeding expectations. Um, I think this is probably the fifth or sixth year of the state report card and every year we have significantly exceeded expectations on behalf of the state. As you can see, Merton Primary received a ninety-four point two percent, which put them basically in the sixth best elementary school in the state of Wisconsin. When you think of a typical elementary school. Um, our school district, uh, basically with the report card of eighty-nine point seven, uh, ranks us sixth amongst four hundred and twenty-two school districts in the state of Wisconsin. So, uh, Merton Intermediate, again, significantly exceeding expectations as well, but some great representation on behalf of the Merton Community School District and our entire community. So, big thank you to everybody who had a big part in that too as well. So it's a great accomplishment for all, so. And we did celebrate a little bit today with lunch, uh, with the staff too. We did have some lunch sponsored by our food service, so thank you very much. So, uh, again, that's, uh, that's it for the report. Great news on that end.
Okay, many reports, our facility team just met this evening before meeting here.
Yep, we did and would, we're going to need to continue some conversations, certainly. Uh, we did begin our conversation around the intermediate school office remodel. We've been talking about that for a little bit. Uh, some, some other questions continue to rise up out of that about, you know, some other facility spaces and particularly the other piece that we were talking about was possibly creating a manufacturing space for our students to continue to create and build and kind of a combination of a traditional wood shop, kind of what we did growing up. But while at the same time making a design space and an opportunity for kids to prototype in many different avenues as well. So we continue to kind of investigate that. And as we take a look at that, there's some things that are kind of in combination together with that. So I think after, we didn't really get to summarize it because we were kind of rushing up here, but I think we should continue the conversation before we move forward at all and talk a little bit big picture because some questions came up about, okay, where's the right space for this? Because we were looking at putting our manufacturing space as a possibility down towards the end of the cafeteria, towards kind of the main exit area. Uh, because we were looking at an area where it had to be away from kind of the other areas because we anticipated to be loud with machinery and things like that when it's being utilized. And, uh, but you know, how does it play into a bigger conversation with either food service and/or some other learning spaces that might be in the future too as well? So, um, so those were kind of the, the really big things that we talked about. The other piece was the intermediate school cafeteria floor about looking at doing something with that and possibly tearing that tile up in spring break time to kind of take a look at what's underneath it. Uh, we do anticipate it being hot with asbestos, that we would have to have, um, you know, that invaded and things like that as we move forward too. So, uh, but again, we really didn't get a chance to wrap everything up. So we'll get together probably early December to continue these conversations, so. Uh, the other piece was is a fitness area. We would like to partner with our PTO and that was part of their fundraising effort was to create kind of two, we have our fitness space right now, but to put a door in, in a wall so that we could utilize a second facility for fitness too as well. And we're real excited about that, uh, to be able to do that too. So, or to come on that though too is that we look to kind of get that project underway too. So, but we'll reconvene the facility team to have some further conversations about some of the remodels and possible moving forward.
Okay, and we're on to the reports and updates and we have the printers.
You don't have to come all the way up here.
Well, no, I won't.
How are you guys doing tonight?
Great.
Good, alright. So, um, Beck and I are going to talk a little bit about things that are happening here. It's only been a few weeks, so, um, that's yours, you put that slide up there.
Well, yeah, it's always about our students, our families, our staff and our communities, so it's just like transition.
There you go. So, um, we had our fifth annual Veterans Day and I don't know if you guys have had a chance to attend our Veterans Day, but it is amazing. And the reason it's amazing is because of the kids. They're the ones who really put it on. So our National Junior Art Society is completely in charge of that. So there's some pictures of them up on the stage and we had some great guests. And then I think the coolest part is when the veterans get to actually go into classrooms and have some conversations with the kids about, um, about their time. And they do a Kahoot quiz once in a while and go back on, go back years and the kids have no idea like what a rotary dial phone is and those sorts of things. So that was just, it's just always amazing to bring them in and the veterans and their families are always so thankful for, for everything. Breakfast is always good. We had World Kindness Day on Wednesday. Um, so Beck and I both do assemblies one Wednesday a month and ours was on kindness, lots of, lots of videos to share. And it was also Cardigan Day, which is not showing up on my, my face, not working on, that's weird, it shows up there but not on screen. Anyways, there were a number of staff members that wore cardigans on NASH, on Cardigan Day. Um, it was started in Pittsburgh because of Fred Rogers, if you know Mr. Rogers there. So I went out and bought a cardigan at Macy's because I didn't have one, because I wanted to participate. But the entire middle school on the half day coming up, a week from tomorrow is going to be going to see A Beautiful Day in the Neighborhood, which is a file pick of Fred Rogers. So Tom Hanks on the left in the upward corner and then Fred Rogers himself in the right there. It'll be fun, looking forward to that.
So we also had our son coming and it was really again focused on a good character habit of kindness, solality very well there. Um, some of the things that we really speak to is the service to others. And so there was just three ways that we kind of, um, put out there, I have around what was the service to others. We have the Boy Scouts that comes in or the Girl Scouts and they always lead us in the pledge of allegiance for these assemblies. Um, the Principal's Council, they really facilitate the assembly we meet a couple of weeks before, kind of figure out like what we're going to do, what are the activities? And we run it in a responsive classroom morning meeting. So it really is, if there's always a message, there's always a greeting, there's activities like I said, and then there's that closing wrap-up too. So those are some of the key components that we have. And then the big highlight here is service to others. We have parents that came in, this happens before school and then a little bit into school. So what happens is to get all the kids organized in a way, I had a lot of parent volunteers assist me with that. So that was really wonderful to do as well. So, and also Abby Klavandi and then AJ Sutter as well and some others done, um, and just different staff that chipped in to help that. So there was a lot of service to others that happened there and those were some of the highlights. Um, even with the microphone going dead, I, we still were able to corral the, the overall message, so that was good. And thank you John Natchan for stepping in for that too.
Your mic falling off too?
Yes.
Mine died as well. It must have just been that day that the microphones weren't going to work. Um, we also had the district report card, Rod mentioned that a little bit before, so that's just a screenshot of that. And we had, uh, we had breakfast this morning. We celebrated Jackie Kryeski's impending baby coming, we're not sure when, but we had a diaper shower this morning. So you'll see some breakfast.
We're not used to going to lunch.
I'm not used to staying and stuff like that. And then, uh, and then we had, uh, the, the district provided us soup and salad for lunch and it was very, and the cookies were good and the cornbread was good too, it was really.
What about the cake I brought?
The cake was good too. I had, I had a piece of that cake.
How many miles do you have to run tonight now?
I ran, I ran six today, I'm pretty good, I'm set. And then the food drive, uh, if, if you walk by the office, you'll see there were over three thousand four hundred items, I think, that were donated throughout the district, which is just amazing. So, um, I had to go across the street because we didn't have a big enough space here for them to get everything organized. So it was at the church across the street. So on the left is just, uh, the kids, some of our kids went over there to help put stuff in, in boxes. And then we didn't have, all this stuff was still yet to be boxed up when the kids had to come back for class with some of our parent volunteers. And Darlene Hefferman has been doing this forever and she was in tears as she's walking across because she's, we've never had this much food. And all of this, these are all those bags of cereal. So, um, I'm not going to throw Brian Fleishman under the bus, but I'm going to talk about him. He's never won one of these sorts of, of contests and all he kept saying was, "We get doughnuts and milk if we win." That's all he said. He didn't put anything else, there's no extra bribe in it. His class alone brought over nine hundred items, which is amazing, so yeah.
We'll say I went with the pride, not prize. We did that way, so, um, if they're expecting more, I don't know.
Yeah. And then Susical Junior is this week. Um, our kids are going to see the, the show, both primary school and intermediate school, see it on, on Thursday morning or afternoon. And then there's evening shows Thursday, Friday, Saturday and an afternoon matinee on Saturday as well. So the kids are really excited. Um, they had a five hour rehearsal yesterday, they're having four hour today, tomorrow and Wednesday and they'll be ready to go on Thursday. So thanks so much for supporting another opportunity for our kids to showcase their talents.
So there were a couple of other things that just highlighting is just parent teacher conferences. We had nearly one hundred percent of families come, come in and share with us. Again, it's just part of our communication system, so it's just one piece of what should be happening every single day. So, um, and I said nearly a hundred percent, I know I saw Ms. Tori Durant, she had a conference today after school too. So people are continuing to engage in those conversations, so thank you to the families. Um, there are three things that always come out of what parents are really looking for in a conference. And first and foremost is do care about my child. Like that's one thing, even a mom is myself, as I want to know that, that's, that's happening. The other two is how's my child doing compared to others and are they at point? And then the last one is what can I do at home to support? So those three things have been kind of focused as we grow together in our communication. Um, book theater, um, so that was part of our conferences tour during that time. So Ms. Kraszewski there did a really nice job and I hope I'm saying that right. That's the Polish way to say it and I'm Polish, so anyway. Um, each teacher received a hundred dollars from that. And then there's also other money that was gained that we're going to put back into the classrooms, so looking at what that looks like. The one thing that I thought was interesting to hear from children, there was a couple of kids talking about the sales tax that went on this year that wasn't, and I, they seem to think it was Mrs. Stein wanted for the school. So that was classic. So nice job to everyone that supported the families that came out to help.
Yeah, and the, the parent volunteers that show up to man that because Casey's not going to do that all by herself. It's, it's just great to have all the parents that show up to help out with that as well.
And then we had Jay and I participated in the PTO supporting our students and we were looking at the staff grants, those we do in the first week of November. And we have six thousand dollars going to staff grant. One of the big things are that we're looking at some different ways to support recess for that movement activity and engaging collaborative, collaborative play. And then the other things were like manipulatives, whether it's massive blocks to support on purposeful play within like a five feet classroom, books and a bunch of things. The one things that I think that you should be aware of as a board and a community is just around any furniture request or the carpeting was denied just because it should go along with our facilities planning and maintenance of that. So we decided those were the areas that we're consistent with, so anything else to you there?
Nope, that's perfect.
And then again, curriculum celebrations and continuous learning here are a couple of things. First of all, if you don't know, Ms. Roden, she did, has put in some work on the ukuleles. And I know Jordan and Darwin did such a fabulous job hanging them so all kids could access. So you'll be seeing that coming up in the, not this concert, but the following. So that's something new that we'll see is a lot more music in our general music program. Um, some other things that we did to give you your time to catch up, you can see here's staff that are chatting and just catching up because Baby Kryeski is coming soon, we said. And that's also a nice way to collaborate around what really is happening, that's social, emotional. And then the last thing was our onward training, a, a group of us from intermediate and the, um, and the primary school with the administration went to this onward. It's really about the understanding of emotional resiliency. Really that understanding, resiliency is that ability to bounce back after some type of adversity or hardship, but bounce back better. Understanding that that hardship allowed you to be stronger. And so that's kind of what we went to with Alina Aguilar's work. And so we'll continue to do that this coming Wednesday. We have a social, emotional meeting with a bunch of staff. Are there some highlights? Questions?
Uh, I have a comment with a question. On your, when you were talking about staff grants, one of the things that you said you do staff grant for was books. I would argue that that should be in the same category as furniture and carpet. That schools should pay for books, not PTO, I guess is the point. So whether that's, we need extra books for, you know, you know, TOE two or whatever, like all of that stuff should come from the district. PTO should have to support that, that money for doing it.
And is that something that you guys do, um, survey or not necessarily survey, but just talking with staff members or grade level teams? What is the status of their library? Yeah, we do sit down and I know that this year our instructional coach, Abby Klavandi, needs to be really wanted to shift some practices maybe back. Um, at the early, um, at the early levels, there's, we've gone away from sending books home with kids, like a core book to read, become a better reader. And it's really at the heart of what makes, you know, good reading instruction. So we're going to go back to having parents have books in hand to be able to read with their child at night. So that's, um, we do ask about that. But isn't all the books that were ordered, you know, for that reasoning, but they were different.
Phil, we do take on core curriculum though. Any resources for...
I know, but even like the take home read books and all that.
Yeah.
All that stuff. Like, and, or even like classroom library books, you know, that's not the bookroom books, like.
We'll load that for the next year. Yeah, we can, we continue to support those.
I mean, yeah. And obviously that should be in the context of it gets directed to, well, I guess Ron ultimately or someone in the business office as opposed to just saying no, obviously.
Right. Oh, yeah. But we pass, the things that don't go through, we pass down and throw the shells.
Yeah.
Definitely. Yeah.
I think PTO two wanted to really, um, support that understanding because they saw the value of the kids coming home of not only those books, but other things that people, um, have requested. So looking for ways, it's nice. We had about 20,000 requests, so coming down to what does that really mean in 6,000 and they were able to spread that money pretty, pretty far out, so. Pretty nice job.
They did.
There was just a question, like to go along with the book. There's staff grants and there's different kinds of, you have a parent grant. If you'd like bribe your child to do it.
Maybe, I don't...
Just tell them they'll get doughnuts like Mr. Fleischman.
We also don't have doughnuts. So we're not handing them. Um, like I think the Spanish should have early elementary school Spanish books to take home. Like I had to run, get it from Hartland Library, the Treehouse series in Spanish.
And we definitely, I can take for what we earned with the dollars for Scholastic. That's actually probably for Scholastic.
So it's always the book thing.
Building it.
Thank you. I guess it's a formality.
And I guess, is there a way for us to get a clearer understanding of what that, those needs are?
Which needs are we talking about now? The requests.
Either the requests or, um, need for books in classrooms? I think that's... Yeah, I think during this year, just being knowing on, on merging, I think that's something that we can continue to look at and, you know, observe and then see like what is it that we need to support and...
We can talk to Abby and we can talk to Andrea too as they're... We have, if you go back in the last several years, we have supported lots of district dollars into classroom libraries.
Okay.
Um, for kids to take home or for, for teachers to bolster their, their own, kind of their own collection. So kids can go and start shopping off their own shelves too as well. Um, in the last several years too, and Jay, stop me if I'm wrong, we've always given $100 per every book fair. For, no, $100 as classic book fair, they can grab maybe seven or eight books out of that. And then teacher wish lists are generously donated too from parents and things too. But, um, I did not see the staff grants this year. Um, and they haven't run through, because typically they, they come and once they, you know, if there's some disagreement or some more further conversations. But we've always said core curriculum will come through us.
Yeah, well, I guess the, I guess it should be curriculum. Maybe it's a different distinction than core curriculum.
Well, it's correct.
I guess it, it depends what you mean by core curriculum, right? Like as an example, would elementary school Spanish be core curriculum? No, we don't teach Spanish to elementary school kids unless you're using it as, uh, ESL. You couldn't teach a second language. Right? Then maybe it would be, but that wouldn't apply to core curriculum, right? But it might still be...
No, but I think it's the Spanish class in the middle school that they want lower level books in Spanish for it to read.
Oh, that was my, my son's...
Was that, was, it was a grade.
That's his son is reading Spanish at a lower level because...
Okay. That makes more sense. So then it wouldn't be core. Regardless, you don't have a point though, right? Like, yep, yep. It should be a broader, like, you know?
Yes.
Because like, uh, you could argue that, uh, teachers, you know, classroom library is not core curriculum, right? Those are extra books that they just happen to pick from, but that'd just still be something that we support.
Okay, thank you, principals. Around the whole business, the 2020 and 2021 student school calendar?
Sure. Um, last month, we, uh, we directed and asked for us to pencil. We got down to two options. And, uh, in front of you is the data from our staff. And as you can see, option C, which basically is, uh, ending in the June 9th or 10th, uh, we see, ending June 9th and, uh, basically having December 23rd off as well as May 28th, uh, the day before Memorial Day, which kind of the days that, that the staff highlighted as nice little extended breaks there. Uh, but also included in option C though is including the half-day options to continue grading for those grading days too as well, so. And Arrowhead, the calendar that was attached there, was approved by Arrowhead last week as well, so. Uh, so these two calendars do match up with Arrowhead almost identical, but almost identical, very similar to what we have in the past. Basically, the only day that really is different is, is Arrowhead is going to school December 23rd and our recommendation would be to not go to school on December 23rd from that standpoint too. Uh, the other few schools have approved or will be approving their calendars that are basically identical to Arrowheads. And except Swallow as is a little bit different because of their construction project. So, so I guess, any questions on, uh, the calendar?
Oh, it probably should be a motion.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, our, the administrative, uh, recommendation is to approve calendar C for the 2020-21 student calendar as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve calendar option C for the 2020-21 student calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Thanks for all the effort of trying to figure this out. It's just more work. I mean, you're never really gonna, gonna come up with something where everyone's happy, but, you know, I think we, we did our best to address, you know, kind of the real things in more.
Right, yeah, I think it's, it addresses a lot of the, the district needs, the board's concerns from, from the, uh, the opportunity of not having that long Christmas break and stuff like...
Well, and the sta, you know, the staffing, the, you know, teachers specifically their, you know, desires and some of the things that they were asking about all the way back to the beginning of this year.
Yeah. Yeah, we're excited about, and I think the staff is excited a little bit about some flexibility at the beginning of the year, uh, and some, you know, continued professional conversations throughout.
Well, and it's something we address every year, so.
If we don't like it, we can come back to it.
We can just keep recording and getting more feedback.
Okay, no more discussion. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carried. We have no other new business. So we're on to future meetings and agenda items. We have our district administrator evaluation in December. How would the board like to do that? Would you like to put it on the front of the December 16th, um, meeting?
That is... What time?
Six?
I think it's six.
Six?